We would be able to, and I'm open for the whole week, whatever.
Because we paid like a fourth of the land value for the permanent easement.
Permanent easement, yeah.
You're talking tile, per se?
Uh, yeah, when we do a tile project, you know, we buy permanent easement over the main.
The highest we've gone on that is twenty-five hundred an acre. I think it more standard is like twenty-one, twenty-five, or twenty-one fifty.
I was just kinda wondering.
Thirty feet wide over the.
Is that what it is, thirty feet?
Yeah.
That's standard, usually is thirty foot wide?
Yeah, for the permanent easement.
For a tile?
Right.
Yeah, for a tile, yeah.
Another question. On a drainage ditch, what's the easement out, you know, past the ditch?
It's called the, the back slope, which it used to be called, what was it called, when they mounted it up before they flattened it off?
Spoil.
The spoil, the spoil bank was the easement.
Okay.
Well, then the farmers leveled, they pulled it off.
And it's armed up to the edge of it?
Pulled it away and they farmed up the edge of it, so now they think the easement doesn't, isn't there in all.
So.
But there's fifteen to two, there's, there's changing arguments going on on that right now, on what rights there are along the edge. The, the latest we had agreed with was fifteen to twenty feet on each side on top. Cause you, you can't maintain it unless you can do that. And even that is pushing your luck as far as staying within it to do their, any repairs or spot cleanouts. So, um, that's what we're working on right now, is the fifteen to twenty feet on each side.
So they have the right to farm over the tile, and, but up to the ditch, we, we keep a buffer zone?
Well, we want a buffer zone, but.
We don't.
Sometimes you get it, sometimes you don't.
The code has a specific section in it that says they have the right to use the spoil bank area.
I see.
But they don't get damages for it.
Right.
If we went in there and cleaned?
Yeah, say you run a, a machine along the bank to, to clean.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have to pay damages for twenty feet out.
Like you technically probably would if you drove out across the tile easement, you'd probably pay damages on that.
Not if you're.
You wouldn't have to.
You don't have to on the permanent easement.
Right.
You don't have to.
Don't have to. But if you cut across the field to get to the main, then you have to pay the damages.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's a, on the ditch part of it, technically, even though they farm up to the edge of it, then something like you said, needs to go out and do some fixing.
Mm-hmm.
They will have the right to go in there and fix it during.
Drive along and get it fixed and no damages.
Yeah, and, and like I say, the code does specifically say that they have, the landowner has the right to use that spoil bank area. I'll find that code section before I leave, but.
Okay, feels good, good.
Oh, no, it's good things to.
It is.
All right, back to thirty-five.
So, it gets, to me, it gets back to the original discussion. We went full circle now, back to where we started.
I think we should move ahead with, uh, the, the easement, permanent easement. Um, how wide we should look at it? I would think you'd wanna be thirty feet on each side.
Yeah, and, and.
So a total of a sixty-foot easement from the base of the center of the bank.
Yeah, cause I'll bet in some places that's twenty-five or thirty feet wide just ditch area, just because it's so spread out.
Oh, okay. Uh, what are you, what would your recommendations be?
Well, I was thinking thirty feet in the middle, and then at least twenty on each side of that.
So you're looking at seventy, total seventy feet?
Yeah, and that's minimum, I think. But I guess it'd be good to get some measurements on some of it as far as, as far as trees.
Well, some of them, yeah, I was gonna say, some of it is such a snake.
Oh, yeah.
Back and forth there that.
Unfortunately, we can't straighten that.
No, you can't.
But we can, we can clean it.
Mm-hmm.
I was just wondering if, if we, can, can you Google that and pull that up and look at it from the?
From the Google Earth?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna wanna fly it with a drone now, but now there's no leaf cover on it, you can see, probably see quite a bit of the.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we proceed with the easement, permanent easement on this project. Uh, we'll get a Google map for next meeting and decide how wide this easement's gonna be.
Yeah.
And proceed in that direction.
You have a motion, do I have a second? I'll second that.
Discussion.
I think, yeah, I think it's probably the best way off to go.
Probably the easiest.
And quickest.
And quickest. And I think that we still need to try to keep this somewhere towards the front burner so that it, cause we don't know what our spring's gonna be like, and with more water coming down that.
Yes.
And, and like we've talked earlier, it really might help keep the debris from plugging up the culverts on Highway three.
And related to that, I looked back through the file a little bit. The pipes under the highway, under Highway three, have essentially a four-inch coefficient. So that even reinforces more that it's blockage instead of the capacity of the pipe that's problem.
Yeah.
You feel like Rick said that, or Bruce, that they're inventing stuff getting down and plugging those up a little bit?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
My question is, is those pipes that are up there in the, in that ditch, or up above by the spring valve, would we have the ability to pull those out because they're three-quarters full of mud and debris anyway?
Yes, and I would say there you, you fall back on the code section that says you have the right to go downstream.
Spot cleanouts.
Yes, and to achieve an acceptable outlet, you can go downstream, and to me, block pipe downstream is.
I think there's three or four places in there that if we clean that area, the flow will drastically improve. Then we go to the, uh, ability to pull some of them trees chunks that are
Mm-hmm.
in the area. It'll help the flow drastically.
I think it'd be good, um, let's see, would be, the, Rick Peterson, the contractor. I think it'd be great to get out there when it warms up a little bit, well before frost is out, but get out there and do some maybe example marking of how the, the trees should be handled.
Go out there, some orange paint.
Yeah.
And.
Ex them or something. Yeah, whether you ex everything that comes out, or you just mark the ones that stay.
Yeah.
I think there's gonna be a lot fewer that stay actually, cause there's so much small stuff that should go.
Well, I think that.
The ones that stay.
That, and, uh, if we just went with our, whatever your recommendation is for distance, and just maybe put a few lines out there so that we could see, you know, try to get a, cause it's so plugged in there. Um, I don't know if it's ever, until it, you can't stand there and visualize, well, where's the forty foot, where's the fifty foot, wherever it would be.
Well, yeah, with this making so much too, it's, yeah, um.
That's why I wondered if you've seen it from above, if you could put a, can you put a border on that and say, oh, this would be seventy feet from whatever your number was?
Yes.
Okay. You could, I can't, I can watch it. Awesome.
And I think it'd be good, um, it'll have to be me or Jason get out there with Rick Peterson, the contractor, and look at.
I think this Rick would like it.
No, this Rick.
No, he would not. Don't do that type of contracting. Not his contracting.
No, but did that help us determine that way that, what that width should be also?
Yeah.
I can say thirty feet plus twenty-five.
Yeah, it'd be good to have the guy who typically do that kinda work and tell you what, what kinda room they do need.
Yep, cause he's gonna have to live with that, to get, to get the work done, just like.
So then down, what about below Highway three, along have a, a fairway to the next?
The culverts there are also four-inch coefficient.
Right, but the, all the little trees down below, those aren't just, are those our responsibility, or are those the city?
Technically, it's city right-of-way, but I don't think you're gonna get them to do anything the way it sounds.
Isn't this gonna be in Bruce's area, gonna be incorporated into all this?
I think that's what we need to do, is include an easement in the area you're talking about.
All the way to the outlet.
Yeah, that won't have to be near his wife.
No.
But.
Once you pull them trees out, it's all riprap in there, and it'll, it's gonna be good.
Yeah, and that's where your spraying would take care of that area nicely.
Yes. That whole distance, really.
Yeah.
For maintaining it, and it, not a huge expense, but.
No, once, once you get it cleaned up, it won't be much of an expense.
No, no, it'd be an initial expense. And you know, the upper landowners, they understand the, the benefit of this, but you know, it's the district that's paying for it, you know, and then, where I went through the legality, that trying to annex it is not really feasible.
She's got a little book there, she's gonna read it.
But just wanna express their concern that, you know, it's another expenditure for the district. I don't think they're gonna fight it tooth and nail.
No, no, I don't either.
But, there again, and it, it's a, it's a beneficial thing, I think, for the, the whole thing, and I'm not so sure, you know, I went through and, and the outlet downstream thing. I'm not entirely sure that the district doesn't have the right to go in and clean this up, period. And I think this easement thing is a more fair. They do have, so we could have.
The, the only thing is, by having an easement, then you have the right to go in anytime you want, and you don't have to fight every time you go through it.
Yeah, and I think it took more of a.
Legality.
Good faith gesture too, to, that you're working with the adjacent landowners and the city and everybody concerned, versus just going in there and cleaning it.
Easement will be filed with the Recorder's Office.
Yeah, that way when somebody purchases lands, they see there's an easement.
They know what's going on.
They know what's going on.
Yep. And speaking to Bruce's question, and keeping this on the front burner, so I can look at the Google map and get the easement width and get that a little more. What's it gonna take to get this easement thing done, uh, timing?
Well, we need to work with the county attorney as far as the wording on things. The intent, the purpose of the easement, what work is gonna be done, and how, what, what might be done in the future, get that wording incorporated, I believe.
Should it be a county attorney, or should be, we be enlisting a drainage attorney?
Well, the drainage attorney suggests our county attorney do it.
Yeah.
I still think you stay forester on the mark some of the trees.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea too.
Yeah, that way we're not stepping all out of toes up through there. All right, any other discussion?
So who wants to head up the?
Logging committee?
Yeah, the, uh, working with John and that on easement.
Well, whose area is it? I'm guessing it's probably.
Isn't that guy over there?
I, I'll help, I mean.
Yeah, we're willing to help, but.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever I can do, because that's, I'm pretty sure I'll get the phone calls from the people that are.
Pretty sure you will too.
Sprays the squirrels aren't gonna have any more trees to scurry in.
Deer won't have the habitat.
State forester, and he says pick him up, well, he's looking out for the squirrels, so, so I don't know his back.
Well, we'll try and get hold of the state forester.
Well, can't you run this faster? You know what the story is. Dr. John, if, if you checked with the drainage attorney, he said the county attorney.
Yeah, he recommended that.
Get him at it.
All the property owners are. All right, we got a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, carry.
And I will help, Trish, whatever I, whatever you want me to do.
You just be the smoother outer?
I'll be there.
Smooser.
Yeah.
Smoother.
I'm already getting his phone calls, so I might as well take someone else.
They know better than they do that. I'll give you that one I got from party.
Okay.
Oh.
All right, DD one twenty-five. Okay, some possible action on repair and outlet structure.
We've got a verbal commitment from Earpaling to do the, do all those earthwork and rock work out, down there. We, we use the size of rock recommended for that type of structure, for topping off those structures. What happened was, there was so much heavy flow this last year, that it's just gradually taken some of the top rock and put it down the backside of the.
This is on the dam?
On the dam, yeah. The small one has the worst.
The settling pond was probably worse than the top side of that.
Worse. So we've been looking at recommendations, we've been checking with quarries, and we came up with a size that we would recommend. Uh, there's also a little problem with the outlet tube on the big structure. So, what we told Earpaling is we'd recommend forty tons on the small settling pond, and then ten tons on the big structure, and there, to do the rock and the installation, total of four thousand dollars. It's a lot of messing around, um, so I think that's reasonable. Um, they do a good job. They, they, we were so impressed with their dirt work on those structures. But yeah, it's a, just a verbal commitment, and we'd like to authorize them so that they can do this before it's.
Caws out.
Yeah, yeah. I don't want some, of course, but not.
Is this essentially adding to what's already there?
Yeah, yeah, there's a little, there's probably this much off the top is going down the bank, or backside, which hasn't hurt anything, because that's where the water goes in overflow anyway. So, doesn't hurt to have that rock on that slope, but probably helps it. But it lowered the top of the rock on that structure, and we need that in there to hold the water back, and then this bigger rock will let more water go through it, but still not.
Move.
Move.
Yeah, not move and not let vast amounts go through. The idea is to get it slowed down enough.
You say big rock?
Okay, uh, twelve inch is what we're looking at, um.
It's actually, it's actually riprap.
Yeah, it's riprap, yeah.
Explored, they have riprap, which is large.
Big stuff.
And they have erosion stone, which is slightly smaller, and.
I couldn't tell you what.
Whichever they did or not, but it's, this would be probably classified as riprap size, that's just bigger pieces.
Bigger stuff, yeah, so. But that's what we're after. It's been going on a while, we'd like to get it done late winter.
And you've been in contact with Earpaling?
Yes, yeah, we've been back and forth with them, and we've got a verbal commitment for the four grand.
So.
They're familiar with the structures.
My question is, and I, I told Mark, called me.
I was just wondering if you visited with him about.
Yes.
I've visited several times with him, and he, I think he's also talked with Rick. Um, and I told him I'd bring this up, cause he's adamant that when this thing was designed, it was designed, and it should've had bigger stone, it should've been, shoulda, shoulda, shoulda. But I just said, unfortunately, that was the way that the design was put forward. You guys went with the design, we put the rock in there that they requested, so we didn't know that we were gonna have the rains that we had a year later, or whatever, and it started pushing it out, so all we can do is fix. But he feels, feels that it should go back on the design of why, um, I, I, so that the district doesn't have to pay. But somehow, it, it just needs to be fixed, so that we can get four ton of whatever size rock, put it in there, and we're moving down, we aren't gonna throw it back and forth.
Everybody knows what a drastic era was. I mean, if we had any idea that was gonna fail, we would've tried to do something with larger rock initially. Here we've got the smaller rock underneath, it's got enough, on top of it, it's not going anywhere, it still allows the seepage, but the very top part that's subject to the overflow will be the bigger stuff and shouldn't move, so, just to.
Just let's get it done before spring and get it in place. If Earpaling said they'd do it, then.
And then what I do like too, is Mark is good friends with one or two of the Earpaling people, for previously, not just from this work. So, I'm sure they will coordinate as far as getting in there and not damaging anything.
Yeah, we don't want any more sales, you can track the crap out of my hayfield and.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we, we were told upfront, there's some good friendships there, they, they would work with each other.
I think that Mark said that, as long as they were doing it, he was good with it, so.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to authorize the repairs, hopefully let's get it on the board, so that we get it done before frost goes out, and the way it looks, we're good for a week or two.
Yep, I would second that motion.
And.
Or so.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry.
We'll probably be going, Earpaling's to authorize a second, and they're just waiting for the call, and we, they're ready to do it.
And then they need to submit a work order.
Okay, BD one oh-three. Authorize repair on the main tile.
There's been, like, three or four different times repairs have been done on one oh-three, and I wonder.
East of Oud.
Yes.
There are snakes back and forth across the railroad tracks.
Yep.
And those underneath the railroad tracks. Yep, I was just out there a couple weeks ago, there's a big hole, another one. Rick's got some, I think, information on that.
So is this out towards where the old fertilizer place was?
Uh, west of that, not that far. It's, you know where the cemetery is?
Yeah.
Uh, go north, and fractionally east.
Okay.
But on the north side of the road from the cemetery, and a little bit to the east. It, that district is just straight north of the cemetery, encompasses most of the town of Oud, and it goes a little ways to the east.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, I see it's like a snake.
It's like a snake.
One, two.
You get right down in here, and they've had a lot of breakage, they've had a lot of breakage on the north side of the tracks, and that's what their concern is.
I know they've done some repairs up there in the past.
Some, more extensively, I think, to the west, they replaced a section.
Quite a few feet of, of the pipe.
Four hundred and thirty-some.
How many?
Four hundred and thirty.
That was how recent.
Couple years ago, maybe.
Yeah, that, here's a.
A year ago, maybe.
More than fifteen. Moore, Moore was the one coordinating it, and, uh, June of two thousand fifteen, we're talking about the estuary cost.
This is Oud here, that's the railroad tracks going through.
Did you get, hear what their kinda thought process was on this?
No.
Okay, we can go up to fifty thousand dollars on a work order.
Mm-hmm.
Before anything has to be bid. They are not.
As long as you don't improve it.
Right.
Right, yeah, that's my point.
And I've made that clear, I said, we, you can't go in there and make something bigger, because you can only, like this four hundred and some feet, whatever size they replaced, they had to replace that size, and then go, you know, fix up some of the old stuff. So I think the landowners are feeling that an entire improvement, which would be probably a new tile system, just isn't gonna fly at this point.
Right.
But there's enough area here that keeps having issues. Some, some way to figure out if, okay, can we go and do another, I don't wanna say how many feet, but the four hundred and some, you know, could, could we get up to a thousand feet or something and replace it?
Is there enough, enough cover over this pipe?
Pretty sure there is.
Okay.
One I just looked at, which is fairly close to the tracks, is deep.
Oh, okay.
I can't speak to when it goes to the west, where they've done some repairs, but, uh, I think it's just old, well, we know it's old.
Yeah, everything's old.
It's old. That's, I think, how this came about, was getting more than just fixing the break here and the break there.
Eighteen, that was replaced.
What was done before.
Wasn't that the way you kind of understand it?
She says on there somewhere.
They, they don't wanna petition for a new tile system.
Yeah, that's understood.
I think it's working efficiently when it's working.
Eighteen hundred feet.
If it was what breaking must be like.
Well, they, that was the idea here, was to try and cover the area that was broken, but I'm, I'm sure what's happened is more area has collapsed.
It just breaks and breaks and breaks.
Yep.
What's that?
Kind of individual.
They.
Four hundred and thirty feet, sixteen.
An old car just keeps breaking down.
Yeah, and at least where I looked at it, and I can't speak to any other place, but where I physically looked at it, it's got plenty of depth, so it's just old.
In the summer of fifteen, they did four hundred and thirty feet pipe, six tile connections, and then installed fifteen inch.
Did the show what that cost.
Is this the add-on here?
Eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
There you go.
For four hundred feet.
Yeah.
Would they add, want to add? Is this down in here, or?
No, it's, it's like from here, this main, this is area that's causing trouble.
Oh, the laterals aren't.
The laterals aren't.
Yeah, and within two, and I kinda said, can you give an estimate on how much it would be? Well, it depends.
And from the drawing.
Well, and he said he'd be available to do it.
Mm-hmm. You have a work order to fix the hole, the broken tile right now, from young one, and that's why Trish mentioned, you know, when you're out there, but what do you do? I mean.
Well, that's why my, my question is, is how far back up would you start, and then where, what if you get into a mess?
I wonder if we shut. You know, this, this is, there's gray areas here, because maybe all the people in the district, I mean, I wonder if we should have a hearing on this or something?
You don't, you could do it informally, and it wouldn't take.
Yeah, have something just.
Keepers notice and all that.
Yeah, just have some sort of, something that's publicized, that we're gonna have a discussion on this, so all the landowners are knowledgeable.
Have at least have an opportunity to listen and talk.
Voice or opinions. Cause it, to me, when you start doing this piecemeal stuff, you're basically putting a new system a piece at a time. So you're kinda, if you know what I'm saying. I kinda want everybody to know what's going on.
Right.
I'm not opposed to it, I just, I just want everybody to know about what's going on.
So how would you, how long would you have?
If I was a landlord, that's.
I'd wanna know if it encroaches on fifty thousand, and the next year you got a bill for.
Couple weeks.
Well, who knows?
We got fifty thousand this year, next year we got another fifty thousand, and next year another fifty thousand, and, and then we just fixed an, a undersized system.
And I'd advantage here, based on the drawing we used before, the area they did was sixteen inch tile. You can't get sixteen inch tile anymore, but you can go to the next size higher, which is eighteen. So you're getting improvement without it having to prove its.
And like here, I think it says twenty inch tile. Well, they don't make twenty inch tile anymore, do they?
No, no.
Was the next size done?
Twenty-four.
Yeah, thirty-six.
I think Rick's on it, but how much of a headache, to let, how much of a headache to let the people in this district know about this?
Not much.
I don't.
They fixed from.
Close to the lagoons, wasn't it?
Uh, this area here, I think there's like an intake here.
Mm-hmm.
And so, it'd be this and this that would be primarily the issue at the moment.
Here's, here's the lagoons, and they, they did a stretch here. They gave the dimensions on this, because they thought it might all have to be done, but they didn't go much further than this. So, yeah, probably all of this is needing something, but, yeah.
But when you start talking about all of this, from here, and it goes there, remember, it goes on the north side of the tracks too, and remember, it goes underneath the tracks.
Yeah, I know.
As a kind, knock on wood and all that, as we speak, the, um, underneath the tracks is fine. There's no, we aren't running into that thing like in Webster County where it's more than done. It's fine. There again, we know, no improvement, and we know what, how much fun it is to go underneath the road right-of-way.
Yeah.
With an improvement, you know, and then you've got this distance here, and I mentioned that the landowner, he owns land right there, uh, where do you start and stop? You know, when you got fifty thousand, well, you said that was eleven thousand dollar bill?
Four hundred feet, four hundred feet is all.
So fifty thousand is not gonna get you from here to here to here.
No, only job will.
So, and I, I said, where do you, and he said, well, that's a big question.
All the area, people in this district should be looking at this and giving their opinion at least.
Informal meetings never hurt.
No, just to, just so everybody knows what's going on.
Yeah.
I agree.
I'm not opposed, like I say, I'm not opposed to it, cause if I was a landlord, that's what I'd recommend doing too, cause.
Well, you know, I know, and I've been with that on any drainage stuff, particularly spot cleanouts, where it's spot, 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 in over a three-year period, if you just have one improvement and clean that area, it'd probably actually been less expensive for them.
Better off.
It's kind of the thing here, but they, you know, they know the other landowners, this landowner knows that landowner, and they said, you put forth a petition for an improvement, he said, it's just not gonna fly.
Yeah.
So, but, but they wanna see some, you know, improvement, some improvements made just on the old system. So, I think that's a good idea, if it's not too much of a headache, cause it's informal, it's not.
No, there's no, nothing legal you have to meet, it's just.
Just so you're sending out, like Rick said, so they're aware of it.
Just a courtesy letter, so they know I'm aware of it.
That'd be Trish's, we'd fall back on her to, to get it.
So like, you, you explain to them that, yeah, you, we might have a fifteen thousand dollar stretch here, kinda like that eleven thousand dollar stretch here. But then, what is your thought of the landowners in the district, somewhere down the road, then you get on the, you get on the north side, and then are you going to have a twenty-five thousand dollar spot, because there's a lot of places that breaks over here?
That's why you wanna make them aware of that, that, oh, they come and say, well, you fixed it once, why are we fixing it again?
Cause it's only gonna be good where you fixed it.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
I think that's a really good idea. So they're aware of it, and they could say, well, we have our blessing to get in this area and fix it, and we know that then, two years down the road, we're gonna do the same thing over here, so then, okay, you're gonna have another bill. That, that, that's kinda.
Just so they're aware of it.
And I, of course, there again, it's only a couple landowners, but, uh, I think that's their goal, if you will, just to try to get it bigger chunks of it updated, without, cause there's no sense in figuring it, but it would be several, several hundred thousand dollar projects.
Oh, yeah, if you stepped it up in size and did more of it.
And went underneath the. And went underneath the railroad crossing.
Yeah.
It would be several, several hundred.
What do you, what's the notification, Trish? Would you just put it in the paper, would you send them a letter, how?
I'd send a letter, yeah.
Is that a big hairy deal, when we don't have to go through, like Rick said, the timeframe?
Just cost us some stamps and then the only thing that makes it more expensive is it includes Bod.
Yeah, that's the thing, is it like the whole town of Bod? Because it, if you look on the map.
Except for the very southwest.
About half of Bod.
Yeah, it's a big chunk of the town, is in this district, not a very big district.
No.
No!
But the, but the people in Bod are gonna be paying for it.
Covered the elevator and all.
Where they have a stroke and a fit, but.
They did some work by the elevator several years ago.
It's, it's a cheaper option doing it this way than doing a full Bod or something.
That's, that's their goal, that, well, he knew that when we were out there and he said, I just, there's no sense in me petitioning.
I couldn't remember that one.
Yeah.
I know that Teak, they had worked in town.
Be too much opposition.
Couple of years ago, at the same time, the other deal.
But you still, for that, and you ask some people in town are paying for it, but you know, they're in that district, they get better from it. So I think that's a good idea, if we can get that.
It's awful small, but I think that's a ten inch runs in from town out.
Then we could have the discussion when they're out there to, there's a spot to fix right now and we'll obviously have that discussion prior to when it could ever be fixed this spring. Maybe they'd be agreeable to, well, you dig into that and you see all this is awful, you go north or south or a little bit of both and make a little bit more improvement in that area.
So are you gonna pencil in like a tentative time for an informal, or are you just gonna pull on a date out of your book or what do you?
I was gonna say, yeah, sure.
Well, you tell us, I mean, what?
What works for you.
Whatever.
Would the mail-in be able to be thrown out this week yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can set it for two weeks from now?
Two weeks from today?
Just pick it.
Just pick the time.
How long are we gonna be doing on our budget and stuff?
Yeah, it's true, let's not, let's not.
We have, two weeks from today, is that the meeting in Farm Bureau? Is that the eleventh, is that the date? Is that two weeks from today?
Farm Bureau got moved back, didn't it?
Yeah, they, they changed it to February something.
February nineteenth, nineteen.
Nineteen?
Yeah.
Must've missed that email.
President State, do we get President State?
No, we don't.
We don't, you sure?
No, I've checked.
I don't think we do. What, courthouse closed?
Is it? Oh, it is closed, okay.
That's right.
Monday, the eleventh of February is a holiday?
No, eighteen.
What's the meeting in the eighteen?
Farm Bureau supper for, they like to invite the county officials to that.
If you're Canadian, it's family day.
Well, we might fall underneath there someplace then, we might wanna check on that, we might not be having a meeting on the eighteenth.
Well, I'm guessing probably the night they're moving.
It won't be here. Okay, so let's move it back then to the twenty-fifth of February.
Could be a little more time to get that set out.
Is that fine?
Twenty-fifth, you gotta reclass.
Rick, is that reclass, gonna be a big hairy deal or not?
Uh, it'll take, I mean, it's gonna take a while, because there's gonna be, it's a big costly project, so there's gonna be some big bills, so people will have some worry on that.
Do you want two groups of people here at the same time? Yeah.
Right.
Say nine thirty, is that too, too much behind, but usually we're always behind anyway.
No, nine, nine thirty should be fine.
Let's set it up for nine thirty, formal discussion on that.
On the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
You don't have to worry about the reclass hearing being.
No, I'll keep my summary short and we'll have handouts for everybody that hasn't seen it yet.
I think most of them are fairly aware of what's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
Half hour?
We came in, actually on that one, we're fortunately, with all the trouble and everything, we're eighty to a hundred thousand under what I had in the preliminary hearing report. So people's numbers should lower down from what we have. That's always, and I don't think we have the issue where we got marginal land.
Right.
And everything's pretty standard out there.
Yep.
So are we gonna go for nine thirty on the informal hearing?
Yeah, just for discussion.
Yeah, inform or just.
No, no hearing, just.
No, just formal meeting.
Yeah.
So. That's one oh-three. One oh-three, nine thirty. Nine thirty.
Was it the nineteenth that Farm Bureau moved to? It's okay.
We'll hand out your phone numbers so they can call you.
Oh, my, okay. Okay, alright. Anything else for us, Rick?
I don't think so.
Oh, when you get a chance, and I'm looking back through a lot of drainage information this past week or so, it hasn't been since last summer that you put together a list of the projects you're working on. We know most all of them, but can you put together a synopsis of?
It's good for us to follow, follow up.
Well, yeah, and that was very much appreciated, it helps us out a lot.
It was just, right, we'd like to keep updated on the work orders.
You got your copy there from last year.
This was just something that you put together.
Yes, yes.
Can, can you do that in the near future?
Absolutely, because I, we have our in-house office list of, of your project and all that.
They keep, you know, obviously comes in front of us as needed, but it's just kinda nice, it really is a good reference.
Oh, yeah, just updating everything.
Like having the list for the work orders, so you can track what's going on.
I'd kinda like to do that monthly.
Yeah, start us doing it.
Well, if we do that, then we kinda know where, where we're all sitting.
So that was the only other thing.
And can you let us know if, once you hear from Earpelding, how? When you notify them and that tentatively they're gonna start next Thursday at whatever, so that.
Yep.
I guess if you just send a notification to her, she can drop us a something.
Sure. Yes. Absolutely.
Other than that, enjoy your snowmobiling.
Anything else on drainage, Trish, you got anything?
Nope.
Take caution to go out of drainage.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry.